Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
That's the consensus.
All right, all right. I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the Select Board of New Hampshire. Welcome, everybody. It's a joint meeting with the Advisory Budget Committee. I want to open the meeting with Mr. Andy Robertson. He is our Town Administrator to discuss the 4K projector update.
Yes, we ran into a little bit of difficulty with the 4K projector procurement. The original unit that we were looking for is backordered and unavailable, likely to be backordered for some time. There is another unit available. It is $300 more than the unit that you have been considering. And I don't know if you talked to Steve today, Denise? We were down to one unit available as of yesterday.
Chris, let's see.
Because in the marketplace. And when we asked if he could hold that for us, he said the only way to hold it for us would be for him to purchase it. And he was not comfortable purchasing it on his own without the blessing of the Board of Select. So we may have a 4K camera available for $300 more than anticipated. And if it's the Board's desire to go after that, I will certainly make the effort.
Well, as much as we've wrestled with this 4K projector, I think we should just go ahead with the extra $300 and get one that we feel is what we need.
Is there anything better about it?
I'm sorry.
Is there anything we're paying $300 for?
It's a different.
It's just a different brand and model, is my understanding. The features are essentially the same.
Yep, it's fine.
And it is an actual 4K.
And just to be clear, because Denise and I had this conversation, but we can still return this one and get our money back, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Okay.
Yep, pretty good.
Okay, we have consensus, and we can go ahead and do that.
Well, do we have full consensus?
I mean, enough to pass it.
Oh, okay, that was a no.
I'm every step farther into this projector thing, the more I go, do we really use it? Do we really need it? Like, is this really? So I'm just going to let you guys go with that one, and I'll be the random no.
Okay, we're going to move on. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Murdock, who's the Chairman of the Advisory Budget Committee. All right, we have one presentation today. Steve, take it away.
All right, so I'm going to, the first budget I'm going to do is the government buildings one, be the newest one that I have. So what we did for this one was we consolidated everything for government buildings. So now every heat and electricity line for the entire town is under this one budget. The only real new lines that were put into it was I increased the building maintenance and renovation line from 19,000 to 35,000. And then you get the 3,000 from the highway buildings to get it to 38. The reason we increased it was a lot of maintenance has been kicked down the road for a long, long time in the handouts that I gave out. So there's a list that Bill's gone around so far, we're finding more, and there's a list of every building and everything quickly needs to get done. And then the pictures are all this building. The first ones are Tom Sallyport. The wire came off the roof over by where the electrical boxes are and destroyed the wall. It got in behind the siding and has rotted the wall out. So now you can, you can't now because they've just put new sheet rock up from the insurance claim, but they never fixed the outside wall. So you can touch siding, or you could touch siding from the inside of the building because there was big holes in the sheathing. The other pictures were from the fire chiefs area. It was in the fire days. They have a set of hoses where they can wash their trucks that had been leaking for a long time and obviously created a lot of black mold in behind the wall. So that one we've already fixed. We cut all the sheet rock out and sprayed a lot of bleach on it to try to kill the mold. And then we re-sheetrocked it, muddied it, and put it back together. But just that fix alone in the fire chiefs was almost $1,000 just to get it done.
Not surprised.
This building also, in the last two weeks, has had $1,500 done to the heating system because one of the circulator pumps that heats the entire building died and then the entire building lost hot water. So we need that fixed. And with only a $19,000 budget and buildings starting to get up to 20 years old, we're starting to find a lot more issues. Some of the systems are coming to the end of their life.
Steve, can I ask you, in the Sallyport, you replaced the OSB on the outside?
We did not. We have to.
Okay.
All that, you see, they're still there. It needs to get fixed.
Okay.
They, when the air conditioning pipes froze over the bay, which we figured out why those froze, they run uphill, so water got stuck. We figured that out four days ago.
Wow.
So water's running uphill, and obviously that doesn't work. But when they froze, all the insurance was for was to fix the sheet rock. That damage had been done long before. That you see on the wall was done long before. So we need to take the outside wall apart and fix that.
Steve, is that 35 or 38?
So it's 35 is what I increased it to. And then I had a building maintenance and renovation separate in the highway department. I just added on to it. So it was all along.
Is this 35 kind of a way?
It's, yeah, it's kind of a way. It could be, it's probably, it probably should be a lot higher, but it's the first year we've ever, we're going to try, so we'll figure out. Because I don't know what else is going to come up. We're.
This is great that you're doing that though.
Yeah. We're, that was a conservative guess. It probably could be more. Well, I know it could be more, and I'm sure I could come up with more stuff to do to the buildings, but for the first year, this was the best guess.
Steve, you said something that bothered me. You said that all our insurance coverage was, i.e. we didn't have enough insurance coverage to fix the damage. Do we need to revisit our insurance policies to see if we are indeed underinsured as far as what they do?
No, I think the insurance covered what it was supposed to because it only covered what was damaged from the broken pipe. And that's all the insurance would have gone after.
Yeah, it's escape from a water vessel, a pressure vessel, and the damage that it does. It wouldn't cover any, no insurance policy would cover pre-existing damage or other things.
So what caused the other damage? And would that have been covered if we had known if it was a leaky roof or?
So the roof itself didn't leak. From what I understand, is so much water comes off that side. Many years ago, it just used to be all shingles, and they've put metal in that area now. And from what I understand is from before they put the metal up, so much water went into that one area, it would hit the ground and force its way back up underneath the siding.
Which did agree with that covered by a property.
Yeah, that would. That's a design issue for the building at the time. But from what I can tell, it's no longer happening because of what they've done, but they just never fixed the wall.
That previous stuff.
And the only reason we even know that it looks like that now is because we had the other issue. Other than that, we never would have if known it was there. But now that we know it's there, it's only going to keep getting, spreading and getting worse.
Steve, the things you've talked to us about, are that's, are those things that you are fixing internally, or are you hiring somebody to come in?
Most on that list, we're going to try to fix internally.
Okay.
Or rent a lift with this extra money and be able to do a lot of things up high with it, and power wash the building and check the roofs.
So you're putting more in carpentry skills to work now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know I saw when I went through quickly, and well, I know you're going to go through it, the one person that you're thinking of hiring. Do you have enough staff to do all this and to do the many of the things you're doing?
I may, if I can, if I get the extra person in the transfer station. I mean, it's still going to be close. The other issue we're going to run into at some point is Bill has already stated that he doesn't want to work 30 hours a week anymore. Once this budget takes effect, he's looking to cut back to like 20. He's just, and he's, he's retired, he's still getting older. He still likes working here, he still likes doing everything, but he just, his wife's after him. Because she's now going to be fully retired coming up in next summer, so that she's looking to have him cut back a little bit more.
But he still likes to stay on the part-time.
And if he cuts back to 20 hours a week, that's, just puts more pressure.
Now is Kristen on full time now, or she's?
30 hours a week, both her and Bill are 30 hours a week.
At this time, okay.
Yeah.
Steve, before we go on, there's, in your list here, you've got the library.
Yeah.
But they're not in any, this, their stuff is in, they're not, right?
Yeah, this is just building maintenance wise, so.
Okay, but you're not, do you take care of the maintenance for them too?
Yes.
Those are separate budgets?
They're, no, from what I can, they have their own budget with normal maintenance stuff, but building maintenance for that building has all been done out of.
The utilities are on their budget?
I'm pretty sure they took them out and put them on here. Or they might not have, maybe it is all.
They're still in here, that's why I asked.
It might all be on there then. But the town hall complex line for the heat, that is all. So that's their heat and the annex and the old library. So the heat's there, but not the electricity. I raised also the landscape budget to 1,500 from the 100 that was previously there, so we can try to.
Actually eliminate?
Yeah. And then the, there's another 4,000 from the transfer station grounds maintenance that I put on to it also. I increased the supplies from 4 to 4,800. When these budgets were done, the new town offices were not included in the fiscal '22, so I increased it by 800 so we could have some, a little bit more wiggle room. And so we have to buy more toilet paper, more paper towels, because the library is now in the old town hall. So I did not fund in this budget because I wasn't really sure on it. The Energy Committee and the Sustainability Committee, I wasn't really sure why they were on the lines.
I think it's one place to stick them.
Okay. I didn't put any money over for them.
But they have requested funds anyways.
Okay. The caution lights are now solar powered, so we could delete them.
That's great.
The tennis court was shut off a few years ago, so that line can now be eliminated. And then, so Joanna made the budget sheet for me, so they're all green and yellow, so you can see where the green ones all came from.
Isn't there talk to update the tennis court? So would that mean that lights would then be put back on again?
Well, we talked about that, but yeah.
Probably at that point, I imagine.
Steve, what are the things that say new line? You've got.
So that's, so the 72?
You've got two of them.
For electricity for the town offices. Currently, there's no budgeted money for electricity for the new town office building.
The daily building?
Yes, for the daily building. So that would be approximately a year's usage of electricity down there.
Same with the heat?
Yes. For those, those two new lines, yes, that's what those are. And then, yeah, that's pretty much it for that line. That's all I really changed, and the two new lines were added for electricity and heat for that building. Which one do you want to do next?
You're in charge.
We'll do the bad one. We'll do the highway department work. So with the highway department, when I tried to, we had gone through with putting people's titles in, so I changed Warren to the road agent assistant. We made the other full-time one, the mechanic, which is what Pete would be. The truck driver full-time is Ben, which he's already working for the town. So I moved him out to the highway department. Right now, he's currently split between the two. He was, as you guys know, he was short-staffed for a while. One of our employees without, he wasn't able to come back. So Ben was hired. It's a split between the two. If the injured employee would have been able to come back, then Ben would have been on the highway, the injured employee would have stayed in the transfer station. So currently, Ben is split between the two. So in this budget, I would bring him out to the highway department full-time, and we would hire one new person in the transfer station. I decreased the part-time on-call pay. I increased overtime by 7,000, and that is because Ben is now, he has a CEO. So even if he stays in the split line, he's still going to come in and plow snow, so we need the extra money in the overtime budget for the new person. Miscellaneous engineering, we increased by 2,000. We had a lot of things coming up in the next few years with right-of-way issues and lots and trying to find rights of ways within roads and some pipes that we need to do and start getting the move on. Cell phone reimbursement. I wasn't sure about this one because of current talk going on, but I increased it what Ben's cell phone allowance would be for the year. Currently, I don't know what the current status is on, on the talk of the other.
Denise and I are meeting with Verizon tomorrow at 11 o'clock to see what we can finalize with regard to the initial proposal for, I believe it was 12 cell phones that we're looking at.
Great.
I increased parts and in-house repair by 500. The trucks are starting to get older. We're still doing a pretty good job maintaining them in-house and not sending stuff out and doing things ourself. We decreased wear edges. We've had three non-winters in a row and had them really. We've been lucky, we haven't done a lot of plowing. The building maintenance got moved. Uniforms went up by $1,500 because in the past year and a half, the price has been increased from the uniform company four times. So the possibility of us maybe trying to get a three-year contract signed with the uniform company where we know the prices are going to stay the same might behoove us in the future.
Yeah, cotton's just going up a crazy rate.
But they just sent letters saying your price is now increased. That's where we're at with them. Rented hired equipment, I didn't move. So we'll go all the way down to the big ones. Paving and asphalt, we increased 50,000. The reason it was increased this past year, we have never paid over $70 a ton for asphalt in this town, ever. The bid for this past year came in at $73.80, so we took a, almost a $4 a ton hit. We did not pave everything we wanted to. We ended up leaving off wheelright drive. So we ended up missing a whole road, and we still went over the $200,000 budget we were allotted, and we ended up going into the encumbered money we were able to encumber over. The reason we paid the highway department was we were starting to teeter on the edge of DES not being acceptable, of an impervious surface for the salt storage, which we are not allowed to store it on, it has to be stored on an impervious surface. And it got to the point where we really going to pave that with the money, and we, but we still wouldn't have had enough to do wheelright if we still, if we didn't pay the highway department, so. And the highway department had been taken off the list numerous years in a row. So we're increasing it by 50,000, but we're all, there's other reasons for it. A lot of the transfer station is falling apart, needs to get paved, this building at some point. It's 20 years old. I got a price to seal coat it for, I think, $10,500, or I could pave it for 30. So seal coat's going to last three or 40 years, paving will last another 20, so it'll, like, where's the best way to spend the money? And then, salt and sand. So that increase is due to, we're going to run out of sand. We weren't able to get into the clay lane area to get the sand out we needed. Sand, so the original increase was just for 30,000 for sand, which is about what we need at $14 a yard, which is 1,400 tons, which is about what we do on a normal winter. It was increased 15,000 more at the last second. Salt prices went up 45% from last year. We paid 46.75 last year. Granted, state barrels came in at 67, and Morton came in at 58. The problem is, is Morton's refusing to honor, at this current point, the state contract, which they're supposed to. So they're trying to make us pay 68.55. So even at 58, it's still 12 or $13 more than last year, which is a big hit. But if we have to pay 67 or 68, we're going to be in a lot of trouble if we get a halfway normal New England winter. So in all that pricing and the increase in it is due to shipping through the ocean, overseas shipping. There's been like a 30 to 40% increase in ship, in the shipping of it, so it's being passed directly on us. Hopefully, it'll go down in the near future, but that's the, trying to budget for not knowing what winter's going to bring and not knowing what the salt bids are going to come in at is extremely difficult. New equipment, I increased 1,200 because we're starting to need to replace some of the stuff that's been around for a while. Like currently, the best-running chainsaw we have is my personal chainsaw. We need to buy some, some new saws.
Is it steel?
Jaws red. But like, a lot of the saws that we have, we take out of the transfer station when people bring them in, and we get them running again, and we use them until they can't be used anymore. So we're pretty frugal down there a lot, like the leaf blowers and push lawnmowers. That's how we keep all our little lawnmowers running, is what we get out of the transfer station.
That's great.
Do you still use those ones you got from the auction?
Yeah, yeah, and those are all working good, but we've had, there's one lawnmower down there that's got four different wheels on it.
It's still turning though, right?
Yeah, they've all come from the transfer station.
It ain't pretty, but it works.
Yes, and our leaf blowers, most of our leaf blowers have come from the transfer station that people haven't wanted, so.
I love it.
We do a pretty good job trying to repurpose stuff down there. Any questions on that budget? All right, so we'll do the transfer station one. So Chip was upgraded to the transfer station foreman, so what we did was, as you can see, the full-time from the previous year was 76, so we took what Chip's new pay is out of that 76 and gave it to him. The new position, if we were to get it, would be the transfer station operator. And that 34.840 was, was to be based at $16.75 an hour is about what we gave him. I kept part-time on-call the same. We really changed all that much in this budget. The porta-potty's gone up a lot. The company that we normally use got sold, so now we're with a new company. And there's really not a lot of porta-potty companies out there, so. Now, I got rid of the office supplies line and zeroed it out, and it got moved down to, we increased, I missed that one in the highway department. We increased the highway department one just so it's in one instead of me constantly going back and forth and taking it out of two. I got rid of the other because we've never really used it. It's just been one of them catch-all lines. Got rid of the kitchen expense line because we don't really, they don't really use it. The one line that's on here that might change would be the dues and subscriptions line, because I don't know, that all depends on what lamprey's cost is going to be to the town for our annual fee that we need to pay them for the lamprey operating cost. The closure cost is a separate one in the solid waste that, we don't know that number yet either. And do you know when we're going to have the meeting for that?
The executive committee meets this Friday, so that starts the budget process.
Okay.
So you won't know that official number probably till December.
Everything, the heat and electricity got moved to government buildings. I decreased new equipment. We've never spent close, and the same thing with the safety equipment. We've got a pretty decent supplier, I've found, that gives us safety equipment at a fairly reasonable price. So even with the new employee in that line, we still were able to decrease the budget by $5,000 for that one. But that is deceiving because we took 10,000 or 11,000, 11,000 out for government building stuff.
Steve, can you just go back and, instead of doing names, do bodies? How many bodies?
Currently, right now, if, there's one full-time person always in there and a second person there that's split.
But I mean, between the, between highway and transfer station, you've moved some, you know, in terms of part-time?
Where they currently are sitting late this second.
Yeah.
There's three and a half in the highway department because one of them is split. So me, two full-time guys there, and then the one split person. And the transfer station full-timers is one in the split position.
And what are you going to with this budget?
Four highway, two transfer station.
Okay, so you're increasing one full.
Yeah, it's only one full-timer.
Okay. That's what I thought.
And do you have a couple people working at the transfer station to new people?
They're part-time.
Part-time?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I got Larry, and Joe's there one day a week now, but Joe's in Barrington, I lost him. Larry's there when Larry can, and then, yes, we have the other new ones. We're actively trying to get, at least try to get one more.
The, not to use names, but the person that you had and left for Barrington has expressed interest to come back. Would he be interested in the new?
He would, he would be.
Yeah. Because he was good.
Yeah, he showed up every day, did what he was supposed to do, and was.
He was compatible.
And was good.
As that goes. Ben is in the highway department. Does he have his license for doing, operating the transfer station?
Yeah, he came with it. He had it when he came from the town, he had it from the town of Exeter.
Yep. How much MSW are you predicting tonnage-wise?
What, this year?
No, 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 for this budget, what are you predicting?
I'm still predicting 1,400, like we normally try to put out.
Okay.
So that, that's why I wanted to get into that one, because that number of 94 is extremely deceiving, because we did not take any C and D out, because it's all in the same bill. So if you take the 11 out from the C and D that got shipped, the number's a lot lower.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, tell us what C and D is.
Construction and demo, I'm not on that budget yet, though.
Okay.
We can be, though, I can go to that one. Solid waste. Solid waste. So the actual budget for last year was um seventy-four. We spent twenty over, if you take out the eleven that was not spent, that should have been for construction and demo. Which we spent all of that and probably a little bit more. It would be down closer to what it should have been, it's on the same bill and it goes to the same company. And with us not being around it in the office and just dropping stuff, it was just easier at the time. Instead of trying to get it to be split between two separate lines to just have it all come out of the MSW line. Written especially not being able to face-to-face talk to people. So the other problem with that was is it was during COVID, everybody. Was cleaning their house out when it first started, the amount of trash that came into that transfer station in the first. Three or four months of the lockdown was absolutely ridiculous. And we also had a lot of people move in to town and a lot of people move out of town in the last year and. People were just cleaning their houses out into that transfer station. And the swap shop wasn't open, so there's a lot of things that happened. And it wasn't just we, it was every transfer station across the entire state saw a dramatic increase in solid waste. And then like the construction and demo was through the roof with what we were getting in, cause everyone was home. They got their stimulus checks and they improved their house. And we got a lot of people that rebuilt their decks and a lot of people that did bathroom remodeling, we saw it all. So. I'm comfortable at the seventy-eight that we're budgeted for in the current year, I don't think we're gonna see any problems with it and. The eighty-six is based off the same and going, you you go through the averages for what we've done. And we're still right there, I mean last year we were only. I think two hundred and fifty tons over what we should have done, so for MSW wise. And we were like a hundred and fifty tons over, no, sorry, eighty tons over on um C and D, which is not that many.
What percentage is that? Cause I don't know how many tons of stuff you're dealing with. Like ten percent?
No, not even, not even that high. Um so essentially the increase in the solid waste, MSW bulky waste line is contractual. What we're paying, what we are gonna have to pay to get rid of it through the lamprey contract. And even with that ninety-four, we still didn't, we still that increase and stuff, we still didn't go over our budget, so we still did a pretty good job. Tires. The the increase for tires hasn't gone up, hazardous waste. This year we only spent nineteen hundred dollars out of the hazardous waste budget, only thirty-six families went. To Dover this past.
So next year, we're gonna get more?
I don't, this is the lowest it's been, so I don't. Really have any answer for that one, other than I just. Left it the same and thought maybe this year was one of them outliers. Electronics, we've never spent more than fifty-five hundred, so I cut it another thousand, cause and we probably could cut it another five hundred if we really needed to. Uh waste oil might end up being an issue. That six hundred might not be enough if I can become a marketer, which I'm pretty sure I can, we should be okay. But Wentworth greenhouses used to take all of our waste oil that we didn't burn and they used it to heat their greenhouses. Wentworth oil sold out, so now Clean Harbors is doing it all and they wanna charge me a dollar a gallon to take our heat used oil and. Two hundred and something dollars just to come. Which is, they're just gonna turn around and and heat buildings whether it's kind of a. But if I become a marketer, I can then test it myself, which we already have the tester stuff to do and I can give it away. So Allen's Diesel can take it to heat their shop. If we ever decided to put an addition on the highway garage, put a waste oil furnace and you don't even have to give it away, we'd be able to use it all down there, so. I'm gonna try to become a marketer. Um the C and D, I increased it by the thousand for contractual issues, I don't see us having that many problems, cause it's died off. Dramatically this year, the amount of construction waste that we've seen. Uh CFCs, we've reduced even more. Essentially that six hundred and six twenty-six to seven fifty that I got it at would be what we would pay FWW for a cylinder exchange. For the amount of free on that we suck out of the air conditioners. Which that program, just air conditioning wise, with the non-ferrule metals we pull out of it so far this year has made us nine thousand dollars.
Oh wow.
In scrap metal. Uh antifreeze, right about the same as that, two fifties for about two fifty-five gallon drums antifreeze per year, which is about what we do, that never really changes. Excuse me, brush grinding, we increased um. This past year, obviously with everyone home, they clean their yards out. We got an increase in brush and that still has not stopped, there's still a lot of brush coming in. The brush grinder that we got. Well, so when we grounded this year, we took. Seven trailers out of there, they weighed a hundred thousand pounds each, so that's how many, many pounds of wood waste we took out of that brush pile. He normally would have charged somebody almost eight grand for that pile. I told him I didn't have that in the budget and he asked, I told him what my budget was and that's what he charged me, so. He's a good contractor and a fair contractor, so we actually got a decent deal on that, but I don't think, I'm not gonna plan on that happening every year. Uh the lamprey closure cost is one of those ones that I will know later on. Uh propane stayed the same, hauling costs got cut all the way to three, cause we got the roll-off truck coming. The three thousand is staying there because when we ship paper recycling, office paper recovery, which is who we. Usually get for that, which is in Wilmington, Mass, does not include. The shipping price and the price that they pay for the materials, so they'll charge five or six hundred dollars to come get it and then drive it back to Mass.
When we haul it, don't we still have to pay for gas and repair it to the truck, does that, does that include?
It's gonna be, a lot of that's come out of the highway department. Because we had the highway department lines high, thinking we were getting sand from clay lane. So we're not able, instead of cutting everything, we just use it for that. Yes, and the recycling this year has gone really well, we just shipped seventeen thousand dollars in aluminum. That the towns made. Next week we should ship almost twenty thousand pet- uh dollars worth of plastic. It should be next week, cause the mills finally opened back up in Canada for it. Price dropped a little bit, but we're still gonna make close to twenty grand, so just in the last month, we're probably maybe forty-five thousand dollars just in recycling for the town in there. And those ones, the plastic, the cardboard, all that, the price includes the trucking, it's just office paper recovery for some reason. That one vendor does not include. Trucking in there, in their rate. So I gotta had to leave something there to be able to get rid of the mixed paper and. If we, if there are the higher price at some point, we do ship cardboard to them at some, at some points, but. Uh we do a pretty good job at the cardboard, we make the highest. Spec that the NRA has, so our cardboard goes to the mills that pay the most money for it, because the townspeople do a pretty good job. Keeping it clean and not wet.
And that pizza though.
Yes, we do, we we need the highest spec for pretty much every recyclable we ship, which is why we're gonna get a dollar something a pound for milk jugs and. Twenty cents for the uh number one plastic and I think almost fifty cents for the number two colored.
Good to believe.
Per pound, so. If we could boost recycling even more, which we're probably only at like forty percent, if we could get that number up around eighty, it'd be. Even better, but.
You're not only increasing what you're getting money back for, but you're decreasing what you're spending money on, so.
Yeah, I mean if you could, well, if you went from eighty percent, from forty to eighty percent. Your bulky, MSW bulky ways would get cut dramatically.
Right, so you're saving and making.
So I'm not advocating for it, but I'll use it as an example, Lancaster went to pay as you throw. And they charged three dollars a bag. They cut their MSW rate in half and doubled. Their recycling rate, because no one wanted to pay to get rid of the glass anymore, pay to get rid of the. Things.
Yeah, and food waste is so heavy too.
But there's a lot of, just standing at the wall, there's a lot of people that don't recycle when you hear the bottles hitting around and the thing, but. Not entirely sure how to fix that.
Maybe that's something we could let the town know more about, you know, and just let them understand, like this is off your bottom line too, so.
So when I put the signs out that said what we were making on the stuff, we increased it a little bit, it did work, cause people are like, oh, if I don't throw my glass over there, like. It's sixty-eight there compared to forty there.
Yeah.
That helped a little, but it didn't help.
Oh, maybe we can just give more awareness, that's great.
Great job.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions?
How much time do you spend administratively, just working on budgets, et cetera?
More now, and the thing, the the thing that. We never real- well, I didn't really realize that, but taking over the transfer station puts. More pressure on Pete Moore, because now I'm doing that stuff instead of out there with them. Uh the buildings, now I'm doing a lot more of that than out there with them, so. I'm not, you you've taken, you know, maybe a fifty-fifty job where I'm out of the office on the road. Compared to in my office and turn it to sixty-five, thirty-five sometimes. In the last month, it's been more like eighty-five, fifteen, cause I've been trying to get the CIFP done, I had. A lot of entries on that compared to everybody else and then this and. Been arguing with Morton Salt and the state over that contract, because I'm bound and determined I'm not paying sixty-eight dollars a ton of percent. So and I, we, I'll know more about that tomorrow, supposedly the contract administrator for Morton is gonna call me.
I overheard Steve's conversation today and they said there would definitely be resolution, but when Steve said, does that mean I'm getting my price, they said there will definitely be resolution.
Yeah. To me, the only resolution is to get the state price, cause the state contract clearly states towns, nonprofits, churches and schools all get the state bill price.
Right.
It's why we bought, that's how we bought the pickup truck. What that's, they do all the work for us, all we have to do is piggyback off of it, it's great.
Which is why they do that, yeah.
But from what I was told. And the town in Newmarket tried to take that Morton price. At fifty-eight dollars and go to Grand State Minerals who we've had for years and say, hey, I can get it for this, can you give me that price? And Granite State's response was, there's no way they can do that price unless they, unless they've got it all ready sitting on the ground from last year. There's zero way that that price can be done, so the feeling amongst. The other towns is the six, or the five should have been a six and they screwed up when they entered it. Because there's zero way in the bid world where you would leave nine dollars on the table.
Right.
Which is what they did compared to Granite State, cause Granite State came in sixty-seven. Which they offered us the same price they gave the state, I got their bid sheet, but Granite State's flat out refu- or Morton's flat out refused to. To do it to this point, so I'll know tomorrow.
Which is their product come from South America?
Mostly, yes. So there's like two salts, like Morton has regular rock salt, which is mined from South America or some of it actually comes from the Midwest and then they have solar salt. Which solar salt, I don't like buying, cause it's inherently wet, so you pay for water weight and you know. More than pay for the water weight, but solar salt, they flood big lagoons.
Yep.
In like Morocco or even uh the Caribbean and they flood it with seawater and let it all evaporate out and then they scoop it up, grind it and then they ship it to you. And it's like as white as your paper, it's white as table salt. But it's inherently wet, it works better, but you're paying the extra, you're paying a lot of extra money for water weight. It freezes in your trucks when it's cold, it's. It makes a lot of work.
What's on the CIP for this year, any, any new toys?
No.
Not toys, but a whole lot of.
Not this year, there, so are you talking about now the. CI, the only, well, there's, it's not a toy, it's a pipe, the CIP has. The pipe that Chesley Brook is due this year, which is Packers Falls Road. That pipe is the only pipe in the state where there's an endangered Burke lamprey and the work trout in the same pipe spawning in the entire state. So, yeah, Fishing Game is extremely interested in that pipe. They want a box culvert that is sunk into the ground with a natural stream bed bottom, which our CIP's got us in there for like a hundred and forty thousand. Uh for us to do that pipe, you're looking at closer to five, we don't have the money.
Would they be putting some grant money up there?
They have to.
They, Fishing Game is not. Even though they're acquiring, so the pipe next to Old Mill Road in the racetrack is getting done by the state. And they had to pay a lot of money into the ARM fund in order to get it done. There's two point one million, or two million dollars available in the ARM fund this year and there's two point one million dollars worth of projects.
And that's very cool.
Our project is in that two point one million. And we asked for four, four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
We just had to add the other part.
Uh we had our first meeting with the ARM fund people out there the other day and there's a lot of people that rather give that project money than some of the other ones, so there's a high probability. We'll be able to do that pipe for less than eighty thousand dollars of we taxpayer money and the rest of it will come from the state.
Oh, great, and it pulls proximity to the the other project.
Yeah, well, that's why, because it's all considered part of the same watershed.
Right.
So if we get all that money, um we could start doing that as soon as next August and have it completely done and and on its way. Streamworks LLC and Mad Berry is doing a lot of the work for us and part of. The ARM grant is like the eighty thousand that we would have has to get, we, like when we put it in, it goes toward the match.
Yeah.
So that company gets paid from the ARM fund and we've already been, they put, Mike told me, if we don't get all the money we wanted and I don't get any of it, then I need to fire them and. They won't charge us for anything, cause it should be that much of a slam dunk to get. But all their pay should come right out of the ARM fund, so we've gotten a lot farther. With the them than we did with the previous engineer that we were working with in this town that. Caused a lot of problems, she started doing stuff on that pipe and they had to redo all of it, none of it was right, it was all wrong.
Agreed, have that done right.
Just. Quickly to revisit where you started off with this question, like.
Administrator.
Ten minutes ago or whatever, him spending most of his time doing administrative work.
I agree that.
Do you guys wanna talk about what we need to do to sort of try to resolve that? Which I consider sort of an issue, because he's not able to do. All the other stuff that he's doing, so what would maybe you suggest that we work towards? To try and change that for you?
I don't know, I saw a lot of it, you you either hire a part-time secretary or we figure out a way to start. Modernizing the highway department and put computer programs in there that make things ten times easier. Well, cause like right now, everything, everything is paper payroll, I do everything paper. So I gotta wait for everyone to bring it, I gotta do it all, then I gotta bring it down to the town hall. Um, you know, doing the money at the transfer station and payroll on Mondays takes half of my day just to get all that stuff done and and.
So I think we need to.
Yeah, that doesn't make any sense.
And and stuff and then with. The way that the environmental stuff is starting to come in with the pipes that need to get done and.
Right, well, you know.
Keeping track of the recycling markets.
We're also about to pass it.
You're pouring as well, taking about the the. Transitioning out of paper into something is gonna take a while, that's for sure, so I really think the best thing we can do. Uh you know, is to look hard at it and get use of administrative help to to do this.
Because you you've taken on a bunch of people's jobs, the kind of three, and and there's been no one to fill in some of those places, I feel like having some support that can really make you.
Yeah, and I know that Peter Moore aren't exactly happy about it.
No.
Cause in all terms. Because it all turns, it all ends up going back on them. And they've done a really, really, really good job. For two guys that don't like to flex too much, they've done a really, really good job.
They've, they've done a great job.
And we wanna keep them
Flexing.
Right, we don't want the middle, right.
And I know Pete does, and he keeps going and going and does everything, but he's
Pete does everything.
Getting older too, so how long are we gonna be able?
Four years.
Four more years? Yeah, so seventy-two.
When he's seventy-two, wow.
That's another, uh, issue that we have to look hard at. It's either trying to get some younger apprentice type people to work on things like, like the crusher and, you know, we have so much different equipment.
Ben's been learning that. Ben's gonna follow with Peter around doing that.
That's great.
The other Ben that was the possibility at the time is, we would have had him, but his boss threw six more dollars an hour at him. And that was the end of that conversation. But I'm hoping that by the time the four years is up, then Alan will be the because he's worked in the transfer station, he's done all that stuff, that Alan would come in is what I'm hoping.
That'd be great.
Because he is a diesel mechanic now. I mean, if that doesn't work, then we're gonna have to go back to the drawing.
Well, I mean, that's just the transfer station. You've got four different budgets there you work on for, for building maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. So we have to, we have to look hard at at least the administrative side to start with.
And do we have enough people doing building maintenance? Is that something we need to think about if we have two people part-time?
If you, if Bill starts cutting himself way, way back, then we don't. And there's a person that I know that I wouldn't mind going after for that. It would just have to be
Soon?
It won't have to be soon, but it would have to be talked about and Andy knows him really well.
Okay. I just think we have to really make sure we have the plans in place that we can actually, if we have these ideas and we wanna get these things done, we need to make sure that people do it without losing people because they're working somewhere that they're exhausted and they're not enjoying their jobs anymore.
Because like we have talented people. Chip builds houses. Chip can do a lot of the stuff on that building maintenance budget. But in order for him to do it, he's not in the transfer station when he needs to be.
Right.
Or in order for Warren to do it, because Warren can build houses, he's not, we're not cutting the cemeteries and mowing.
What time do you go to work this morning?
Me?
Yeah.
Five forty-five.
Five forty-five. What time are you going to work tonight?
One o'clock this morning. Tomorrow morning I'm going to work. And I'll be here until eight tomorrow night.
Yeah. But that's not a long term plan of mine.
So, yeah, I'm thinking, can we do something sooner rather than later as far as especially the administrative stuff? And talk about getting him the help that he needs? It's not, I think it's now. I don't think it's, we need to talk about it now.
Right. We've been discussing it for, uh, the past few months. We've been waiting for the salary study to come in so we have an understanding of where we're at, what we need to do and then, yeah, we really need to do it.
It's been, it's been discussed and the board has made, made every attempt during an extremely difficult time in the transfer station to get me help and help me. So they have tried and they have done a good job at it. It's just trying to find people right now is not exactly easy either.
Can, can we have, one of the things, I like the modernization thing, but maybe that's a conversation that maybe Andy you can have with him? In terms of what can we do in terms of relieving some of those particular things? The other thing I wanna know is how much of this is systemic? How much of this is something that happens all the time versus something that happens just periodically?
Touch up, right. Do it to get that one, that gets you better.
Maybe that's something that maybe you and Andy can have a conversation about and maybe you guys can come up with, you know, this is the things that he's doing, like the thing about payroll, there's systems out there that are electronic.
There are some very good systems that I'm familiar with. Ulti Pro is one that I'm just coming off of moving into here. I, I think those systems work wonderfully if you've got computer access for all your, for all your employees.
Yeah, and that's a, that's another thing. Our computers at the highway department, there's only one that's new. All the other ones we've taken out of the transfer station and
Well, that's one of the things that I sincerely talked with Steve about the options that are
There's a program I used at the state called MATS and that's how we entered payroll. But it's also how we entered everything that was done for the entire day.
Yeah.
So
Streamline.
And your winter maintenance was in it and you entered how many tons of material you used. And it had everyone's hourly rage all the way in it. So if you called me and said, Steve, I wanna know how much money that snowstorm just cost the town. Once payroll's done, I can tell you exactly down to the, the last cent how much that cost the town.
Well, maybe you guys can
Yeah, that's a great idea.
In terms of the computer thing, that's something that we've asked Denise and Andy to look at in terms of what we have and what the replacement is gonna be for those particular things. If you've got machines that are older or we need to have more of them, they need to be on that particular list.
So like the one that Dawn is using for the cemetery, because we made her an office in my building, that came from the transfer station. The one in the transfer station doesn't really work, but we don't really use it. We probably should get one for the mechanic out back so he can do stuff. Because my idea for modernizing isn't at this point just for payroll. There, I have, there's so much equipment and buildings that we have to keep track of now that having some kind of inventory management system to keep track of every single thing that we have and oil changes and everything is needed. And it's taken me to this point, three and a half years after I started to get Peter to finally say, I think that might be good. So I've been working on it. Because we, it's all written down. He, he just has it in his own system. He's not gonna be here forever and you've gotta put something there that's gonna get
The next person can
The next person can just go, oh, this is easy and they can figure it out.
But if he can hand it over to somebody who enters it.
Yeah, I mean
That might be the way that, until he's not there.
Well, he could enter it. The problem is just putting everything that he has in paper into the computer. I don't have time to do that, but he's not gonna do that.
Right.
And that's not a knock at him by any means. He's just, he's not a computer guy and
Nobody expects him to be. That's not why he, we love him.
So that, that will take a little while, the computer thing.
Right.
As far as getting them, him the help that he needs, you guys have been working on that already?
Yeah.
Yeah. But like the computer stuff and the modernization, that stuff's, you know, it'll be in the CIP for the highway stuff tomorrow.
Right.
Okay.
They're just rough estimates, but they're there, like we're thinking about doing them. We're just, but that's where I put them and not in this, because
Can I ask, I don't know if anybody has any other questions, but you mentioned in terms of this new person you're proposing for the transfer station, you had sixteen dollars. Do you think you'd get somebody for that?
No. McDonald's is fourteen.
Maybe.
Maybe. I just was trying to give something that would be more attainable within the realm of the budget. I know for a fact that, I mean, the one that we had there before he got hurt was making less than that, so I don't
Well, things have changed.
Changed a lot.
But when I, yeah, but when I look at all the full-time transfer station, transfer station positions that are constantly being posted throughout the entire state and there's twenty-something plus of them, sixteen, seventy-five would be the highest.
But are they getting filled? Are they just sitting there open?
No, but that would be, no, but so that would be entry because if the wage study comes back and you put a step system in, they get more for every level they move up with their license.
To do well.
So like you, if you're a level one, which is what I am, Chip's a senior operator. Chip's got a lot higher license than I do. I mean, Ben Lyons, the, the new order employee, he has a higher level license than I do right now. But he's a step two. I'm still only a step one. So as you move up with your class schedule that you have to do every year for continuing ed, once you go to step two or three or, then you would go up and pay. Essentially, I figured sixteen, seventy-five would be like entry level.
So that's starting day.
I got entry level, I don't know what I'm doing.
Right. And here's the way you can make more money. Here's what you need to do and, and that gives value to the town, so that makes sense.
I think one of the things we have to do when we get the salary study, when we get the salary study is to go through those because these present, budget presentations are what they're thinking right now. So I think we're gonna have to go and tweet, the three of us will have to go in and tweet those based on what we see in this particular study.
Yeah, because that's, those numbers are gonna have to, yeah, that's what I'm thinking. There's nothing really cheaper. Like, you know, everything raises a price. It raises like
My taxes went down. That was cheap. How about that?
Per thousand.
Really?
Yes.
My taxes went down. Those two, their taxes went up.
Yeah.
Boy, it's
Do the math.
It's information, it's information available at the town hall if you wanna go see.
It's on, it's on the town Facebook page and it's in this Friday's E trial with a breakdown for
So we can see like what our taxes are gonna be now?
Well, you have the rate. So you have to find your evaluation.
Okay.
So mine went down, so come, stay with me if you want.
That's nice of you to offer up as
Come with you.
That's generous.
I just, I'm not happy with the highway budget. I just the two biggest items was salt and sand and paving and I just, one or the other. Obviously I go with the salt and sand because you can't, you need that in the winter more than, you know, you need the roads paved too, but
Well, I'll get shipping or is it, um, Los Angeles has forty percent of the containers come through Los Angeles and they're backed up.
They can't even get up the boat.
So, you know, the rate you're paying for is not necessarily shipping from one place to the others. Cost of shipping from one place and then that ship sitting there waiting to get unloaded.
Yep, and
That costs them money.
I fell out of my chair when I saw what those prices were because I was like, oh, it's been forty-six, seventy-five for the last three years. It's never moved.
And there's no sand, we can't use more sand because that's not gonna help with the type of stuff we need, right? We can't like use more of one and less of the other.
So there's a lot of studies out there that clearly state that sand is a lot worse for the environment than salt.
Right.
We need you to go home.
Yeah.
Are we looking at having to buy our sand?
We're gonna have to buy our sand probably from here for, we're, we're always gonna have to buy it from here on out, I think.
The clay lane thing didn't work out.
Um, there's no way. If, if you ended up doing it and following so like the last meeting last year when you guys asked me about it and I seemed like I was a little shell shocked. I found out that morning, the lawyer told us that we didn't have to follow town rules. We could follow state rules, which would have opened the area up to a lot more room. I found out at like eleven o'clock before a planning board meeting that the way the town rules were written, which they already, they were written after the Clay Lane parcel was taken by tax deed. So, and it was only taken for tax deed for sand. So all this was written after the town, we took it, that it clearly states for sand that's, the town has to follow its own rules, which no other zoning regulation in the town sets. So following our own rules, we've only been able to dig like an area a hundred feet long and thirty feet wide, which didn't make any, it wasn't worth it.
Right.
It wasn't.
So there's no way to change that?
Yeah, you could, yeah, you could put something through a legislative body to change it.
Right.
It's a town rule, you know, they made it, they can undo it. But you have to have support for that.
I can tell you that the people on Daniel's Drive will fight that tooth and nail and I really don't blame them.
They're just fighting, okay.
And they've already accused me and Karen of trying to change the rules, which we haven't. I just did give it up. I've just, once I found out the rules had changed like that, I'm like, oh, that's nice. Just the end of that.
It's a dumb, dumb issue.
Yep.
All right, anyone else have any further questions?
Go home, Steve.
I think we'll turn it back over. Karen?
I'll be back in a few hours.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, you. For all your hard work on many different departments.
Thank you.
Just thinking about it right now.
I had one comment to make just for Andy's benefit. Hello, Andy.
Hi.
I really showed up late. But the computer thing reminds me of something that was brought up in a previous meeting. And I don't know if it was captured in the minutes. Uh, the sustainability committee, I think, brought up the fact that the town committees also have no set information gathering process. I don't, I don't know that files are kept. We certainly have nothing when it comes to all the spreadsheets. And I've, I've got PowerPoint presentations from previous committees I've been on and so on that are just on my Google Drive. So it seems like we need a solution that's both, like one of these companies that provides a computer, has the sort of security and monitoring on it, make sure that things are up to date so that we're not pulling things out of the trash and setting them up somewhere. That seems, that's a little too ragtag even for me. I think maybe our current IT provider could be someone that we look at. But if we wanna expand that, maybe we wanna go out for bids for that stuff again and say, you know, can you provide us with, figure out how many computers we actually need and to be serviced for town employees. But then on top of that, have that work with a store solution like, uh, Google Drive or Microsoft SharePoint or something like that. Where the town committees can deposit files somewhere and town employees, everybody has access to it. Just seems like we should bring that all into one system.
Yep.
Great idea. And it's all over the news again about all this cyber attack stuff too. So we should make sure that whatever we're doing is set up in a way that it's not making it easy to be a target.
Yeah, I read more into the one that was brought up during the sustainability committing, uh, committee, uh, presentation. And don't talk to people on the phone you don't know. That's what that one was. The ransomware was not somebody sitting at a keyboard trying to break into a system. It was somebody sitting at a computer calling up the person saying, I'm from your software provider. What's that again? You know, what's this information, that information? And then they were able to get into the system and hold whichever town it was, I forget the name.
Peterborough.
Peterborough ransom. But it was because the town treasurer or town's secretary or something, not to degrade town secretaries. Some towns are quite smart and savvy.
That's fine.
But, but just thought, oh, I, I ought to provide this bank information or whatever it was.
Social engineering, that's what it is.
Yeah, so hang up and call the bank back.
The Peterborough case, they actually redirected the payment to separate accounts. And unfortunately, Peterborough, they did it, uh, at least twice in a row, if not three times.
Wow.
But I, I have met with, uh, the town treasurer, Mr. Jeans, and Joanne and I actually met earlier this week to talk specifically about, um, some solutions for financial protection. More so aimed at banking transactions and that sort of thing. But, uh, the way into the banking transactions is through all the other areas that you've got online in town that, uh, are not necessarily following financial protocols and wouldn't even begin to think of
You wanna turn it back over with Megan or Hall of German?
I did it twice, but you didn't
I have two things, Mr. Brown, two things.
Turn it back over.
Uh, tomorrow night, the conservation commission would like to speak to us for about five minutes. So if we can do that before we start the F, F, F financial planning discussion.
I'm sorry, who would like to speak?
Conservation commission.
Okay.
The second thing is it's, uh, been approached by certain individuals. There's a parcel on Route Four that is across, well, you know where Sullivan Tire is? Four on the fours across the road. It's kind of where they put in the water line. That particular property is gonna be available. And the person that owns it wants to know if the town of Lee would be interested in purchasing it. So a couple of things, one, it's on the Oyster River. So it's possible that maybe we could buy it, cut off the lots that are on Route Four, because that's still commercial, and then put the rest of it in conservation. So it's something that they're interested in seeing if the town of Lee, I don't wanna talk about it right now, but just think about it. So, um, I'd rather have it under conservation than, but the big concern is that's part of our commercial zone.
Is that where the Christmas tree lot used to be and the shrubs and plants and it's on the right as they're coming towards the circle?
Further down.
Further down. So the shrub place is here, okay? Sullivan Tire is next. You've gone across the Oyster River. Sullivan Tire is next. It's the next parcel on the same side of the road. It's across where that little car is.
Yeah. Motoring images.
Yes. The person who owns the property there and the trailer are looking to get rid of
How many, how many acres do we have under conservation?
That's Karen.
I don't know.
Okay.
Probably
And we have a lot, we have a goal that we were working towards, but we had a goal that was upland. Is this upland or is this woodland?
Well, the front part of it is upland. The back part of it's Oyster River. So that's, that's all for it, that's all.
Right. So, yeah, I was just thinking if it was up, then that's, that's part of the goal we've been going towards, but if it's more wet, then, yeah.
They're gonna present it to us tomorrow. Part of it is wet, part of it is not.
That's not coming from conservation, no. No.
Two separate things.
Two separate things.
Two separate things, okay.
So just thinking about it out loud, if we were to buy the whole parcel, which is twenty-plus acres, lot line adjustment, back part, which is wet, hydric soils.
Yeah.
Put that into easement and then split off the lots in front for commercial, because that's all commercial up to...
Wet soil is already protected now.
Okay.
Yeah, but the part that's...
No, it's...
Yeah. So...
I'm just, I'm just saying. That's why I think they were, so they're focused on Highland.
Well, the thing is, if somebody's gonna buy that for commercial, they're gonna want next to the road, as close as possible. They're not gonna want everything, you know, all the way back. Um, but the thing is, if the town of Lee is not interested, she's gonna[1771.16]